I'm trying to, I'm trying to milk every, I'm trying. Good evening. As Chairman of the Hartford, Vice Chairman of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the March 21st, 2023 regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board Superintendent and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of the Hartford Public School System. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of the school system and thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. Now, this will be read in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del 21 de marzo del 2023. Damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y la superintendente se complacen que se haya unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos del personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad del al superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y asténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo de esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y les damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you. We will now move on to public comment. And we will have Board Member Francois read our statement.
We, as a board, in collaboration with the Superintendent and district leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of HPS. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously. And to that end, staff will follow up within 48 hours. If follow-up is required via preferred method of contact, the speaker has indicated on the sign-in sheet. We will follow this no-contact method of follow-up for the time being, adhering to safety protocols. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now, this will be read in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la superintendente y el personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. El personal hará un seguimiento dentro de las 48 horas, si es necesario, a través del método de contacto preferido que el orador ha indicado en la hoja de registro. Seguiremos este método de seguimiento sin contacto por el momento, adhiriéndonos a los protocolos de seguridad. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de 48 horas. Le recomendamos que tiene, le recordamos que tiene tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, el timbre sonará, dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios. Gracias.
Lori Weiner.
Hi, my name is Lori Weimer. I am a teacher at the Sport and Medical Science Academy and have been so for the past 19 years. Since the beginning of December, our school has been under attack. We've had nine bomb threats of what I can only believe were varying levels of danger based upon if we were evacuated completely or allowed to stay in the parking lot until the all-clear was given. We now know that most of those threats were made by a student, one of my own, which is sometimes makes it even worse. During that time, communication from the district was nonexistent. As a teacher, I did not hear once from district-level administrators regarding what was being done or even that they were simply just thinking of us. On the days of the threats, communication from the school was limited. Some days, we received an email before the workday saying to stay out of the building, but no follow-up. On other days, we received a parent square message that was sent to parents and staff. It came after the event and after we returned to the building that there was a threat made. At no time did I, as a teacher, receive any support of any information from the district. Only after one of the offenders was discovered did the district administrator finally speak with us. I know that a common phrase given to people going through any kind of trauma is, "I understand what you're going through." However, in this case, it was just insulting. District administrators have no idea how any of us in the building feel because there has been zero communication with us. Maybe if any district administrator had actually spoken to us before this time period, I would have taken this phrase differently. Instead, it just shows how out of touch the district administration actually is. Instead of showing support for the school, students, and staff, it was a "school is normal" attitude, except nothing was actually normal. Our daily schedule was out of whack, our intervention system stopped working, and the emotional toll was high. The best was going through Alice training, a training that consisted of someone yelling at us. Anytime we asked a question, the response would be, the information would be communicated to us. If you'd understood what was going on in our building, you'd understand why that reply didn't sit well with us. Last week, the student I confessed to threatening our building six separate times returned to the building after a 10-day suspension. Although he had an expulsion hearing, he was not expelled. The anxiety, fear, and upheaval that I thought was over with continues. I'm expected to look at this student daily in my classroom as though nothing has happened. And once again, we've heard nothing from district administration. And to my understanding, parents in school, staff, parents and students haven't even been notified that the student returned to the building. I understand that the expulsion is an impulsive, sorry, was heard by an impartial attorney, approved by the state and district personnel, did not make the final decision. However, something needs to be, needs to be done. I understand it's a public requirement to provide with a free and public education, but they're not a Hartford resident. Why should the very staff and students that they were traumatized by this student continue to be in the same building? You guys are failing to provide a safe environment for our students, our school, and our SMSA community. On top of this, the Hartford Public School Student Card of Contact has become a joke in my building. A student gets expelled for one threat, but makes six? No, show back up into the building the next day. Students are emboldened by the student's return and believe consequences before behavior will be minimal. SMSA is my home. I've been there for 19 years. I'm part of it. It's my family. Over the last year, you guys, we've been faced with several tragedies. These threats are just the final straw. Each time, we've heard nothing from the district. Nothing. I believe that eventually, SMSA will get over this, but it's only by the true grit of the staff, not because the district has supported us in any way, shape, or form.
Patricia Mack.
She's back. Good evening. Happy Women's History Month. I am Patricia Mack, and I'm providing an updated progress on the Kerry-Saxon Perry mural project at Sand School. We've submitted a signed document contract for the project manager, Levy Corduas, to Corinne Barney, and are waiting for an acknowledgement. Furthermore, we're expecting reimbursement for the insurance policy that the city of Hartford requested at the beginning of the project. Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, the grantor, would like to proof the complete mural project. They would like proof of the completed mural project. The unveiling ceremony will be held in June with a firm date forthcoming from the lead artist. We have also notified family members of the Kerry-Saxon Perry family, who are excited to hear that the project is moving forward. We would also like to thank Ayesha Crullers, who was a sophomore from Trinity College, who spoke on our behalf in the month of February. Ms. Crullers described her research on Kerry-Saxon Perry and her positive experience visiting organizers Desiree Primus in her fifth-grade class. Once again, thank you to the Board of Education for the assistance in highlighting this local shiro for our students and our community. Thank you.
Michael Downs.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Michael Downs, 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. I'm president of the Hartford Federation of Substitute Teachers. And the first thing I'd like to discuss this evening is the fact that I have here newspaper articles about substitute teachers becoming scarce and an article about schools step up to retain staff with bonuses. And there was a bonus offered to the non-certified staff as well. And I'd like to note that many of the substitute teachers are working five days a week, and that's every day, and week in and week out, month in and month out. Yet, not one substitute teacher received a retention bonus. I request that substitute teachers, especially, and many of them deserve a bonus and should receive one, a retention bonus, that is. And so, I'll end that there, except I'm not going to be happy if they don't. I also notice that every month, we talk about the student attendance problem and the decline in the number of students that are in the school system. And this isn't a problem that is inimical to the city of Hartford. It's unfortunate, but the city of Hartford actually looks good compared to the rest of the nation. This is a nationwide problem. It doesn't mean that we have to stop working on, I know we're working hard on prevention of absenteeism and trying to have students, encourage students to come back to school and limit the decline that we have suffered in this city. Nationwide, it's almost 2 million students have not come back to school since the beginning of the pandemic. Thank you.
Carol Gale.
Good evening, members of the Board of Ed, Superintendent of Schools. My name is Carol Gale. I am a Hartford resident and the president of the Hartford Federation of Teachers. There are four items on tonight's agenda that I wish to comment on. Number one, you will be looking at the proposed calendar for school year 2324, as it is being presented for a first reading. The Hartford Federation of Teachers would like to thank Madeline Nagroen for working with us on this calendar. She provided the union adequate time to solicit input from our members on various aspects of next year's calendar and also acted on much of that input in drafting the calendar that is before you this evening. So, thank you, Dr. Nagroen. And HFT certainly encourages the Board of Ed's support of the draft calendar that is in your agenda. Secondly, the recently negotiated contract between the Hartford Board of Ed and the Hartford Federation of Child Development Associates is up for your approval. Given that this contract was unanimously ratified by the rank-and-file members of the Hartford Federation of Child Development Associates, HFT strongly recommends that you approve this contract. Third, the International Alliance Group's contract is up for renewal. The HFT has certainly supported the Caribbean Connection Recruitment Program. In fact, HFT's second vice president Stuart Beckford first raised the idea to expand the recruitment efforts that were focused on Puerto Rico to encompass other Caribbean nations. HFT then agreed to work with the district on providing additional bonus and relocation allotments to candidates who were being recruited from these efforts. However, we were not informed at that time that each recruit would cost the district an additional 20% to 25% of their salary in payment to the International Alliance Group. HFT is concerned about this cost charged by AIG for their assistance with the J-1 visas and academic support to new hires. The $1 million should stay right here in our own community. The West Indian Foundation is a local organization that can assist with J-1 visas, as they have relationships with various consulates already. And onboarding support is most helpful when it comes from within the same building, or at least from within the district. Thus, HFT asked the Board not to renew this contract. The last agenda item is the lease request for Central Office's relocation. The renovation of Buckley High and the relocation of Central Office was all part of the Superintendent's initial consolidation plan to save the district money and was explained through various community meetings at the time. However, the community hasn't been informed of these change in plans. What is the rationale for spending an additional 1.5 million and adding two more years of Buckley High School students having to remain located in a subpar split condition of buildings at opposite ends of the city? Is this the time for this renovation when we're facing a budget deficit? So, we do urge the Board of Ed to make decisions that are certainly in the best interests of our students. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Again, thank you to each and everyone who took their time to come out. Are we, tonight would not be a night if we didn't hear from this gentleman. Wouldn't feel complete.
John Walton.
Good evening, Superintendent and distinguished Board members. Thank you for that compliment, Vice Chair Johnson. I wanted to commend the Board of Education because I watched the last board meeting and I was so impressed, and I had a conversation with the Superintendent, was so impressed by the approval of the contract between Eli Patrick and Company. That's amazing for our community because Dr. Clark is teaching our kids leadership development and financial literacy, something that our community desperately needs. So, I commend the Board members for that approval and also for the approval, even though there are some skepticism around the approval of the contract with the gaming system. But I think that is another option for our children and our school to have another outlet for our children, to have a career in something different. Now, I agree that there's some hesitation around what this kind of technology can do to kids using it too much, but I think it was a good idea to add it. And I'm just grateful to the Board for approving those contracts. You know, our chairman, Philip Rigger, he's not here, but you know, his accomplishments speaks for themselves. You guys are making inroads, and I'm very happy about the legislative connection that you guys are going to begin to undertake because that's very important to this community, not just what we do day-to-day, but what we do broadly. Vice Chair Johnson, your background in organizing and getting people together and galvanizing the community, everyone knows about it. We need more of that. And you also have some background in law, which is interesting. So, you know how to not only organize people, but keep them legally, looking for just ways to accomplish their goals. Board Member Bella, Mexican heritage, born and raised in Hartford, a veteran, and was the director of the Latino Community Services. That speaks for itself. You're a part of this community. Your investment is a part of this community, and therefore, your leadership in this community goes without question. Mr. Smurling, CEO of the Children's Medical Center. I agree with you that not everyone has to be a doctor or in the medical field to be able to have insight and good ideas for what you do. The union president, I didn't know much, so I had to lean on the people that were around me in order to get things done. But when you have an eye and put good people around you and your ultimate goal is what their ultimate goal in, and the benefit of the children in your background, you know, advocating over four decades for children in healthy communities, that speaks for itself as well. Member Legger, Haitian descent, born and raised in Hartford, Hartford alumnus. You have so much community investment, I can't even start describing it because you actually taught in these schools, so you know what it's like. You know, and you have children who went to the school, so you definitely know what it's like. And of Haitian descent, that speaks for itself. A proud heritage of people who fought for their freedom. Board Member Escobrano. Escobrano, I don't want to say your name, Hartford native, Hartford Public Schools alumnus as well. And what I did know is you are a bridge builder. Every community program that you've encountered has been to bridge the gap between finances and education from the community to professionalism. Board Member Walker, I actually got to know you when you were asking questions about the gaming thing, the gaming program. And I agree with you, you know, and we need those kinds of tough questions because that balances everyone to open their minds to the pros and cons of what this could undertake. You've been a Hartford resident for over 20 years, and you've served in the community for 15. Your service speaks for itself. Board Member Oliver isn't here, we all know her credentials. But Board Member Brody, your advocacy, strong advocate in this community, strong black woman in this community, is why you're a Board member. You've been a part of this community and been fighting for this community for a very long time, and we appreciate you. With that being said, I didn't come here today to talk about what's wrong. I actually came here to say what's right. And if we have enough courage to say what's, or we stand up here and say what's wrong with what's going on, we should have enough courage to come up here and say what's right with what's going on. Financial literacy for this community is very important because without that financial literacy, without us balancing it financially for our community, then they will not be as open to hear the rest of the educational aspects. Because that's where the divide is. Our children on the streets are suffering because they have less, so they're fighting for more. Now, they may misinterpret what more is, but that's what their fight is for. I would ask Superintendent, the expansion of that youth program group, to actually partner with Dr. Clark's group with Eli and Patrick so that we can make this a broader program for the entire school district. There also, you have a teacher who is the head coach of Buckley Basketball Program and teaches at Buckley, who is also trying to partner with our youth program. He has a youth program for rec. We would like to use the rec youth program to identify the kids who not only need rec, but also would be willing to do the work program that we're undertaking with our facilities. I think these things together would help our community in the best way possible to give them new and better options to a brighter future. I thank you for your attention.
Again, thank each and every one of you who came out tonight to speak, and thank you for the challenge and thank you for the compliments. We now move on to the report of the Chair. As was stated, our Chairman is not here this evening, but I will always want to continually remind everyone that every board meeting, you can find the full committee reports as well as all attachments and videos in the meeting's agenda on Board Docs. A reminder that all committee and workshop meetings are live-streamed as well as viewable after the meeting. The YouTube links are saved in each meeting's agenda on Board Docs. I encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports when possible. If you have any questions, please contact Christina Santiago, our Board Liaison, at We will now move on to the report of the Superintendent.
Thank you and good evening, and also a reminder that there is a lot more content to my report than what I share here. I want to take a quick look at our progress toward our student engagement, chronic absenteeism, and attendance. And this presentation can also be found linked to my And this presentation can also be found linked to my report. So although chronic absenteeism and average daily attendance are not where we want them to be, given that we have a long ways to go, I am happy to report that the positive momentum I shared at our last board meeting has continued and chronic absenteeism is trending down, that is where we want it to trend. Incentives like our current March Madness month-long attendance program help build excitement and school spirit among students and staff, but more important work still remains, right? Our teams continue to do home visits where our engagement specialists, our family and community support providers are really looking at the root causes and the most appropriate strategies to improve engagement and attendance. And just to give you a quick number, so far this year, 4,500 home visits have been logged in. And I want to shout out McDonough for starting their walking school bus program as well. And also shout out to our school nurses for going above and beyond to keep our students as healthy as possible. They have been an incredible resource for our families. If we look at the next slide, and I know there's a lot here, but this is actually a school view. You can see here, the green bar represents attendance last year at this time and the blue bar shows our average daily attendance as of March 17th. And as you can see, for most of our schools, right, they are trending in the right direction with big gains made by our comprehensive high schools and McDonough and Milner, just to name a few schools. But we also see schools that were at or above 90% last year, they also continue to improve. Shout out to University High for being the highest performing high school and the third highest school in the district in terms of their improvement. Some more bright spots in this school-by-school breakdown, the biggest takeaway is that most all schools are trending in the right direction as we compare that to last year at this time. Some actually with significant improvements like Milner, Naylor, Cincella High School, Burns, McDonough, MD Fox and several others. And the leaders and the leadership teams at these schools know that they aren't where they want to be. I know they want to continue to improve and accelerate, but they also recognize the incredible work that their staff and the families are doing to get our students, right, more engaged and so that we can have our young people develop those consistent, healthy, positive attendance habits. One more data slide, and this actually shows a comparison of similar districts across the state. The red bar that you see represents chronic absenteeism for the 21, 22 academic year. The green, blue and orange bars represent the trend we've seen over the 22, 23 academic year to date. So essentially, chronic absenteeism continues to be a problem for similar districts and not every district has seen a consistent reduction. We have seen a consistent reduction and I want to credit our improvement to the work being done each and every day by our school-level attendance teams, our SESs, our family and community support providers, as well as the work that is being done at the system level with our district team as well, right? Because we're trying to implement a strategy that is really aligned all the way from the Central Office to the schools, specifically around the supports that we're able to provide. So a few, and I'll conclude with some other shout-outs and bright spots. I'm not going to read all of them here, but just to name a few, congratulations to Cincella Upper, McDonough, Pathways, University High, Breakthrough North, Belizzi, Elams, MD Fox, Milner, Naylor, Parkview Global and Rossin for hitting their 22, 23 ESSA targets. We have several targets, I don't know if some of the Board members remember that we reviewed the scorecard and the ESSA, we have stretch goals. And so some of our schools have already reached those goals and so we want to highlight and celebrate them. Shout out also to Betancet's Learning Lab, they won the Hartford Heroes District Attendance Challenge with over 600 points and to Naylor and Wish for their second and third place finishes. And, you know, I do want to conclude by recognizing some of our school leaders, principals at University High, Naylor, McDonough and Sanchez, because they presented at the Leadership Institute focused on their best practices in improving student engagement and attendance. And it is important for us that we have our school leaders share their effective strategies within the network of principals so that we can continue to not only learn from one another, but collectively improve our district-wide attendance habits. So that is all I have to say around attendance. I do have one other comment to make and that is that this month, March, is Board Member Appreciation Month. And we are deeply grateful. Our students and families and our staff benefit every day from the dedication and the commitment to public education by our amazing, outstanding school Board members, whether they are elected or appointed, they all make personal sacrifices and spend countless hours tending to board business. So it is a thankless job often that extends far beyond the time that you spend here at these board meetings, beyond the board workshops, beyond the numerous committee obligations. So I and on behalf of my team as well, I want to extend my deep admiration and appreciation to all of our Board members for serving as leaders in the City of Hartford and for your commitment to all of the members of our school community. So thank you. That concludes my report.
For those that are watching and viewing online, there was a thunderous round of applause for these amazing Board members that sacrificed their time, particularly on a second day of spring when it's like 62 degrees outside and we all should be outside. So we're just going to thank each and every one of you for being here. And I also want to shout out just really quickly as we move forward. My son received perfect attendance at Sarah, what's the name of the school he went to? Fisher, Annie Fisher, I'm sorry, Annie Fisher. I'm sorry, I got mixed up. I don't know who Sarah is. Hopefully she's doing well though. Perfect attendance and I think they're at like 97, 98.
Can you say the whole name of the school, please?
Anna Fisher Montessori Magnet School, I think that's right. But I'm proud of him, he came home with a letter and I think their school is doing well. So shout out to all of the schools that's doing well in our district. Thank you Superintendent. We will now move on to our business agenda. Item 4.1, Contract Continuation Approval, International Alliance Group. Is there a motion, motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the Superintendent to execute a contract with the International Alliance Group for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th, 2024? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Superintendent?
Thank you. We are seeking to renew the partnership with the International Alliance Group, which manages the international teach alliances, the J-1 visa program to help fill positions by applicants from other countries. This partnership is important to, for example, for some of our dual-language classrooms with a high concentration of Portuguese-speaking children and families. And we also know that Connecticut is home to one of the largest Caribbean communities in the world. The expansion of these recruitment efforts through the Caribbean Connection Teacher Recruitment Program will help us source unique talent in those hard-to-fill positions and create an exchange of culture, history and ideas. And just to give you a snapshot as to some of our needs, we currently have a need for 58 teachers to fill bilingual TESOL, ESL, World Language, Math, Sciences, Elementary, Music, Art and English positions. Dr. Curtis is not here, but we do have our team members that can speak or answer any questions. One other thing that I will highlight is that this opportunity is another tool, if you will, in our toolbox. When we think about the efforts to recruit, retain our talent, right, we know that some of our other efforts include paso a paso. We're also working on our growing our own, right, non-certified pathways to certification, Relay Graduate School of Education Partnership, our Buckley High School Public Service Pathway, Hartford Promise and our multiple education prep partnerships with our area higher ed institutions. So we have here Deputy Paul Foster and our senior recruiter Nancy Williams. And I believe we have on Zoom also a representative from... No. Oh, you're having issues, oh, having issues with connectivity, okay.
All right. Looking to my colleagues, are there any questions regarding this contract?
Yes.
Recognizing Board Member Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me now? Thank you. So my question is about the process of how this works. Now, what I was told from talking to Dr. Curtis before is that IAG would process these J-1 visas, correct? And you can talk to me about that. But what I also understood is the recruitment of these teachers will still be done by others. Like if folks in the community identify the teachers, they would be funneled through this program. So understanding IAG is not going out and recruiting teachers, their primary role is to process these J-1 visas. Is that correct or can you tell me more about how IAG is going to work?
Yeah, I can speak to it. So IAG is involved in the recruitment and so certainly if somebody comes forward and says, you know, here's a potential candidate, they would include them in the pool. But IAG is a part of the process of forming a pool of candidates and then they also do screening and vetting to make sure that the candidates are eligible for both the visa and for the program because there's obviously a certification process that has to happen through the state of Connecticut as well. And so they're really helping from the recruitment to the vetting and screening all the way to the onboarding.
That's not what I understood. So let me drill down on the recruitment piece because, so they really are going to go out and find the teachers? Is that what they're really going to do?
So we actually worked in partnership on the recruitment aspect of that because it is part of their role to recruit teachers. They recruit teachers across countries around the globe. They're probably one of the largest providers of J-1 visas in the human resource space. But we decided that we would partner with them on the recruitment efforts just because we do have such a large community here in Hartford and we've had heard over the years of people wanting to join the team or have relatives or friends who are in the Caribbean. So we thought we would partner with them and we did. We hosted information sessions with IAG as well as our staff here and we hosted three sessions and we had about 850 people attend those information sessions on Zoom. So those candidates were encouraged to apply not only to our posting but also to the posting through IAG so they can be vetted correctly because IAG needs to ensure that they have all the materials that is required for the J-1 visa sponsorship.
I have one additional question. What, what you're explaining to me is what I've heard too, which is you and the community are doing a lot of the recruitment. What I just want to register here is that what we're being asked is IAG is going to do this processing, which I think is very necessary. Their cost is $60,000, between $45,000 and $60,000 to do this processing over three years. The concern that was registered before is one I would register too, that it's rather pricey for the processing piece when we really, there's still a cost to actually hold workshops, attract people, get people to actually want to apply. Is this the main value proposition of IAG is just to do this processing and this vetting with the J-1 visas?
Certainly, I mean, one of the reasons we have to go with a company like IAG is because of the processing the visas. I'm not sure I would say that's their only value proposition because of the other things we already talked about, but certainly we have to go to a firm like IAG in part because there are only, I believe, five firms that are approved in the state of Connecticut to sponsor, to be part of this program of sponsoring J-1 visas for teachers so that the folks that they're sponsoring can access the international visiting teaching permit so they're actually licensed to teach in our schools. So certainly the visa and their ability to sponsor J-1 visas is a critical part of why we're engaging with them, but I believe there's other value they're bringing to the table. So I wouldn't say that's their only value proposition.
Thank you Board Member Walker. Any other, yes, Dr. Smirley?
First of all, I think the effort to recruit teachers is commendable and we've had some good success and I know how complex the J-1 visa process is, so thank you for the services you're delivering. You mentioned there are four or five organizations that are approved by the state. How does the 20 to 25% cost compared to those? Are we market competitive or can it be done for less?
Yeah, so the other thing I should have added is that some of those vendors in the space, at least one that I'm aware of, actually only, there's one of those five vendors that actually is only sponsoring visas for folks coming from South Asia, so some of them are even regionally focused and so some of them are ruled out simply on that basis. But yeah, I believe that the, you know, because we're not the J-1 visa, right, they hold the J-1 visa, they're sponsoring that visa, I believe we're cross-competitive relative to the services that they're providing.
Yes, I saw Board Member Brody and then Board Member Francois.
So we have years one through three. So we're asking educators for three years?
So yes, I mean, obviously we can't, I believe, and Ms. Williams may be able to speak to this more specifically, we are working on an MOU. We would have folks sign to make a minimum commitment of two years. But the reality is we only pay the money to IAG if they're continuing with us. So it's not like if somebody comes for a year and teaches with us and decides it's not for them, we're not paying for years two and three for that individual.
Okay. Do we have any data on who's returned, who's not?
It just started this year, we have four folks who are here this year under this program and so they're all still here, I believe.
Yes, and they're all effective or very effective.
So there's no commitment after one year?
No.
Like they can drop out at any time?
I mean, ultimately you can't really hold people, right? But we are working to have an MOU, so we're asking for a minimum two-year commitment and asking folks to sign for that minimum two-year commitment. At the end of the day, if someone says after one year, look, I got to go home, you know, we can't hold them, but we also aren't paying IAG if they do that.
And with the J-1 visa process, it's actually renewed every year. So before they're done with their first year, we would have to indicate to IAG they've been successful, we want to move ahead with application for year two. So you actually have to go through the application process yearly, up to three years.
Okay, so at the end of three years, we'll be at roughly one point, well, it varies depending on the, if they're a veteran, master's, bachelor's, so but somewhere around the area of $1 million at the end.
Yeah, that's on the high end. Basically, we gave you an estimate based on average salary because as you know, what we pay IAG is based on a percentage of salary, so we're giving you a rough average, but that is premised on all of the folks we recruit. We recruit the full number that we hope to recruit and those folks all stay for the full three years. So that's really the very most we would ultimately pay.
Okay, and my last comment definitely is through the contracts that we see coming through, it seems like we're becoming a district that love to go through other agencies and pay them well for it to recruit staff. That's a little troubling to me and I'm still waiting on our comprehensive plan for when we don't have to go out of our United States of America, we could actually go to HBCUs and get some black teachers in front of our black students because we've gotten others in front of our other students. So I'm still waiting for that comprehensive plan from our talent management leader. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you so much. My question is, have you explored the option of using the West Indian Foundation? If they have offered to assist with the processing of the J-1 visas, would it be more cost-effective? Can you speak to that?
My understanding with that is even if they have the expertise to work with the J-1 visas, they would have to be approved through the Connecticut Department of Education in order to do the process for us because there's this additional layer of the international visiting teacher permit in order to be licensed to teach. And so that's what I said, that there's the sort of five approved organizations. I don't, I don't believe that organization is one of the five that are approved through the state to actually sponsor visas for the purpose of bringing teachers into our district or into districts in Connecticut.
Thank you.
Looking and seeing no other questions, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with the International Alliance Group for the term outlined in contract ending June 30th, 2024. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Recognize any abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you so much for everything you do. Now moving on to item 4.2, approval of lease Central Office. Motion that the Board of Education authorizes the approval of the lease at 280 Trumbull for the term outlined in the contract at an amount not exceeding $1,412,986. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded by Board Member Walker, if you didn't hear. Superintendent.
Thank you. Just a brief background and then additional context. So in August of 2020, we at Central Office relocated to the Buckley High School campus. The relocation was in response to our district model of excellence and a specific action to reduce our lease obligations as a district. And so although the renovation of Buckley High School was initially planned as an occupied renovation, the construction program manager determined that the upcoming construction phases could not be completed without significant impact to the construction schedule and the work environment. A few kind of like timeline pieces, the project timeline. The original occupancy date was August 2024. That has already been delayed by a year. So we're now looking at August of 2025. In October of 2021, the program manager, Arcata's, requests that Central Office relocate for a nine-week period to address noise level and safety concerns in the workspace and also to accommodate the roof replacement, HVAC system installation, and also some window installation. The request was put on hold, however, to assess market conditions and respond to a statewide audit. Fast forward to October of 2022, and the program manager recommends that Central Office, including the Welcome Center, relocate from summer of 2023 to summer of 2025 due to three key pieces. The impact on the construction schedule, right? Without the relocation, the student occupancy date shifts from August 2025 to then August 2026. So that would be a two-year delay for students. Budget implications, Central Office remaining on the site would require the build-out of swing space, off-shift work, and general condition costs due to that one-year extension. And so the projected cost is an approximation of $4 million increase on top of the pending ask due to COVID-related escalations. And lastly, health and safety risks, right? It alleviates health and safety concerns relative to the unacceptable noise levels and access through the active construction site. Chief Davis-Gooch, our chief of operations, is here to answer additional questions.
All right. Looking to my colleagues, are there any questions? Board Member Brody?
A few things were mentioned. Are we equating safety to noise? Like, is that the only safety issue?
It is not. Good evening, Cheery Davis-Gooch, Chief Operating Officer. It is just not a noise level. They actually need to do roofwork and work on the exterior of the building, replacing the skin and actually installing windows. And there's a replacement of the HVAC system.
Okay. And for people who have not been following, are you able to just describe? Because when the board initially approved the specs or however it was presented to us, it was to be occupied during renovation. So if you could explain how was that and how we are about to vote on a lease?
Yes. I would characterize it as the design of the high school was actually completed after the Central Office moved to the location. So once the design was completed, the construction manager was clear that it was going to be very difficult for us to stay in the occupied renovation. So that's the simple answer of the design was not completed prior to us relocating.
Thank you. And for me, I've expressed it in committee. I'm very disappointed, only because, not at you, Chief Gooch, but this was presented to the board to us. So there was some things that needed, the board had questions. So the expectation was that it would come back to us with the questions. But what came back to us was that we would not have to pay for the renovation, that it would be absorbed within the construction. And the city of Hartford name was mentioned in that absorption of costs. But then something must have changed because it appeared in our budget that was voted on and approved. So initially, we would have voted about this as a singular item. And that was the expectation. But it went away. It appeared miraculously in a budget that we voted on for an entire school district without... It's like, I felt we weren't able to debate individual items because for anybody who watched that meeting, when I brought up the HBCU recruitment, it was like, oh, that's one singular item. So it's a budget for the entire district. So I'm disappointed because, number one, there was questions. It was not brought back to us with the answers. It was told us it went to the city. They were going to absorb the cost. Then it appeared in a budget. This board voted to approve that budget. But now we're voting on a lease, but there's no money attached to this lease that's on the agenda tonight. So we've already voted that we'll pay for it, but now we're just, it seems like a formality. We got the money out of the way. Now we're just voting on the lease of it, which, to me, it took away my opportunity to deal with the money for connected to the lease. But now tonight, we're dealing with the lease. So because of that process, that I feel took away my ability to ask many questions about the lease and all of those things. I will not be supporting this item. But I do have a question as far as the location of the... Like, because it's not like on a main. You can't hop, get off the bus and go right into, like, we were at 960 Main. Like, being at Buckley, you get off the main road and you go right. And so some families who are in wheelchairs, who are elderly raising grandchildren, who are, have to walk with multiple children, how are we thinking of them getting, like, have, did we think that through as far as like them getting to this Trumbull Street location?
We absolutely did. The location is one block from where we were in 960. And so that bus line is still running there on Main Street.
Little different, though. A little difference in the sense of when I picture... Maybe it's okay if you're coming from north. You're on, you would be on that side of the street. But I'm just imagining someone maneuvering. We might think it's just a block, but for the community, the concern is a little more than that because it's, you can have multiple children, and you're trying to navigate downtown busy that part. That's from a family with multiple children or a family who don't move around without ease.
Well, what I can share is that we vetted multiple locations. That was the best location, one, because it was plug-and-play, meaning that there is furniture, the fixtures are there, and the network is available. And because it was in close proximity to where we were before, that worked for families. It was actually closer. It was one of the options that were closest to 960 than the other options that were available downtown Hartford.
Thank you, Board Member Brody. I believe we have one more question by Board Member Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief Davis-Gooch, let's talk about schedule. So what you're saying is if we vote on this now, how confident are you that we make that 2025 completion date for Buckley? Is this what you think is the best path to make that happen?
I believe so. I mean, we've worked over the last two years with our program manager, working to ensure that we can get our students back into the building. As we shared, it was already a one-year delay. That first nine-week period was, you know, something we had discussed in, over many meetings. And this last ask coming to us, October 2022, not only did we dig deep into the schedule, but so did the city program manager, Paul Drummy, in the Hartford School Building Committee. He's the chairperson. So this has been vetted in multiple meetings.
Thank you for that. My closing comment is no one likes, you know, surprises, particularly ones that are unpleasant surprises. But my expectation is that we do everything we can to get that 2025 date. To me, that's my expectation is that if we make that date, then this decision somehow worth work to doing. So I really depend on your team and the superintendent to make sure that date really is real and held.
Board Member Escobar.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Hi, Chief Davis-Gooch. So for those who do not know, I am part of the School Building Committee. And I just want to clarify a couple of things here. During that meeting, it was, and Chief Davis-Gooch, please correct me if anything I'm paraphrasing here is incorrect, please. It was on Monday, right? Today, yeah, Monday, yesterday. Long story short is the project manager set it on record that this, unfortunately, right? Things happened, COVID happened, construction schedules, the importance of construction schedule and making sure we stick to it is going to be very vital moving forward. We 100% agree. But the cost of $1,412,986, that you guys, they worked with the city of Hartford. The city of Hartford is going to put in that money. The state is going to then reimburse the city of Hartford. So this money is not coming out of our Board of Vet budget. I just want to clarify that. And that was on record, the project manager sent there that $1 million and some change. Thank you. That $1 million and some change is included now in the total project cost in agreement with the city of Hartford. City of Hartford is going to pay for it, then the state will reimburse them. I just want to put that as clarification. And please correct me if I said anything wrong.
So the project cost, the lease cost, is going to run through the construction project. Right now, that construction project has a bucket of money attributed to it. In the time being, any lease cost will be put into that, like, we'll invoice the city through the construction costs. Anytime you invoice through construction costs, you then make an appeal to the state for reimbursement. So all these costs will go through the project and then up to the state. At the end, there's going to be a decision around, is this an eligible cost or ineligible cost? And that was the brunt of the conversation yesterday. We have to go back, or the project manager has to go back to the city to talk about the escalated cost of the project due to COVID and other reasons. When they do that, they're going to include the ask for the leased space. And that is supposed to happen in short order, within two to three months.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to make that clear for the viewing audience here.
Absolutely. Dr. Schmerle?
I just wanted to comment, I think there's some very good questions asked. But just to clarify, I live on Trumbull Street, and there's not the same amount of traffic on Trumbull as there might be on Main Street. So, and there is a bus line, I think, on Asylum, which is a block away. So I really think in terms of traffic and safety, I don't believe that would be an issue. Like, I live on that street, I wouldn't if it were dangerous. And I have grandchildren, and I walk up and down that street into the park. So I think it's a good location. And actually, we did try to find some alternative locations for the district at a better price. And we couldn't find a better price. And we own some property we thought we could discount and could not match this price. So I think it is the best we can do, given the circumstances.
Thank you. Final comment by Ms. Brody, and then we'll take our vote.
So in the finance meeting, it was said that there will be an ask to the state for reimbursement. Because if we weren't paying for it, it wouldn't, if we, if there was no possibility that we would even be paying for it, it wouldn't be in our budget. So it's in our budget for a reason. Because the state can very well say it's not approved. What was said in finance was, is a high probability that it would be approved. But there is a possibility that it will not be. That's why it's in our budget. So is, please verify that there is a possibility that it won't be covered and Hartford Public Schools will be paying for that.
So I wouldn't say that Hartford Public Schools would be paying for it. I would say that once we got the confirmation from the state, whether it was yea or nay, that the city and Hartford Public Schools will work together to figure out how it will get covered.
So I guess my question is, why is it in our budget?
I think it was put in the budget as a safeguard. Just to make sure that we're able to continue with the project so our students will be able to get back into the building. That was just a safeguard.
Okay. And I'll end with a comment that I didn't, I didn't sit up here this evening and make up the fact that there was a concern about parents navigating children walking down in downtown Hartford. That was really something that was brought to me. So I don't want that to be just, you know, tossed out. That was really a conversation that I had with the community around navigating multiple children and for those who are in a wheelchair, et cetera, managing a block in downtown Hartford. I don't believe it's not safe, but it can become unsafe. And that was something that was brought to me. So I thought it was right to bring it to the board.
Thank you so much, Ms. Brody. Thank you so much, Chief Gooch. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the approval of the lease of 280 Trumbull for the term outlined in the contract at the amount not to exceed $1,412,986. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Can you please speak into the microphone?
Nay.
Any abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion moves. On to item four point three, reading and adoption of several policies. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education adopt the revised policies zero zero one zero theory of action and nine three two one, board meeting and committees. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. I will go through these policies as I am the policy chair. These policies have gone through the committee process and now are up for adoption. Theory of action, the theory of action focuses intention articulates why actions are planned and taken and names expected impact. Proposed updates to the district theory of action written and adopted in two thousand eight were reviewed and thoroughly discussed. Board meetings and committees. The committee work on striking a balance on ensuring the public's time to speak and running an efficient meeting. The committee agreed that capping the initial public comment to sixty minutes, ensuring students and parents speak first, and holding additional public comment at the end of the business agenda as necessary. I will now open the floor to any questions or any discussion. Hearing no questions or discussion, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education adopt the revised policies zero zero one zero theory of action and nine three two one, board meeting and committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
The ayes have it. The ayes have it and the motion moves. Item four point four, first reading policy zero five two three equity policy six one seven two, alternative education programs. The equity equity policy, the diversity of our student body, our community and our staff is a strength of this district that should be fostered. Educational equity benefits all students in our entire community. The purpose of this policy is to establish a framework for the elimination of bias, particularly racism and cultural bias as factors affecting student achievement and learning experiences, and to promote learning in work environments that welcome, respect and value diversity. As the board, one of the board members who had a chance to attend the National School Board Association's conference in Washington, D.C., this is something I did want to come back and finish for our district, and I'm happy that we are moving in this direction. So I just wanted to throw that in there. Shout out to Francois, Chanté and Kim, who all went down and we all came back and felt like this is something that we wanted to move forward in our district. Our second is alternative education programs. This is a mandated policy. Alternative education means school or program maintained and operated by the board that is offered to students in a non-traditional education setting that addresses the social, emotional, behavioral and academic needs of such students. Our district currently has four alternative paths pathways for our students. Hope one, hope two, new visions and personalized pathways at HPS. H P H S. The alternative pathways offer our overaged and undercredited students an opportunity to accelerate their credit attainment as well as fully engaged with their coursework. The environment is small, insecure, with an emphasis on flexibility and community. As this is the first reading, no vote is required at this time. But are there any questions or comments from the board on what has been proposed? Hearing none, we are going to move forward to item four point five, first reading proposed two thousand twenty-three dash twenty-four district calendar. Superintendent?
Yes, the proposed academic calendar does reflect input and feedback collected from HFT leadership as well as membership. We had two hundred and seventy-seven respondents via surveys administered by the HFT. It also represents parent feedback against the extended winter recess in the twenty-two twenty-three academic calendar. It was also presented and discussed at the Teaching and Learning Committee meeting. A few points to reference here in terms of what was considered to develop the calendar, a review of available school district calendars at the time to align days off with our surrounding towns to the extent possible. We do bring in, I welcome students from over sixty surrounding towns. It is a one hundred and eighty-one school, one hundred and eighty-one day calendar and the school begins the last week of August. There's some alignment in terms of the days off with surrounding towns and districts such as Indigenous Peoples' Day, Veterans' Day, there's alignment with several neighboring districts, also alignment with spring break. And there is a more typical winter break with no observance for of Three Kings' Day since it falls on a on a weekend, on a Saturday. There are also the two intercession weeks in February and in April, given that intercession is part of our extended learning opportunities included in our S R application as part of our must-wins. I will pause there and I believe Dr. Negron is available for any questions.
Are there any questions? Yes, Board Member Jair.
Forgot my last name, huh? No, I'm kidding.
Escobar.
Good evening, Dr. Negron. I just, not a question, just a comment, I just want to applaud you and your team and everyone here for the level of collaboration you've had with HFT, like seriously, like props to you and your team. I speaking for myself, but I can speak for my fellow colleagues, I think that's the type of collaboration we love to see and hear. So seriously, kudos to you for making that happen and being open and just thank you for that. It's great to see and hear.
Well, thank you. Good evening. I do also want to thank the collaboration with Carol Gale and the team. It was feedback that we received last year and I had promised that we would follow through this year, and this is how we did.
I do have a just a quick question on the schedule. I I've received several phone calls on this year's schedule and how there have just been back-to-back days off and, you know, I'm I'm used to taking a, you know, a good screaming or, you know, a good, you know, it comes a part of it, so I certainly understand. Do you mind just sharing the difference between this year's schedule and the potential schedule for next year and how it can potentially accommodate families? Because it felt like there was an extensive time off for students at the beginning of the year and then moving into these holidays, like they just seem to all pile up at once, right? And my inbox sometimes is full of parents like, why did you all do that? Please don't do it again. So can you just share a little light on how this potentially might be a little different than this year?
Yes, so the big one was related to the extended winter break, which the superintendent referenced at the beginning. And again, that was done because we did not know what the year would bring as we, right, we're still heavy into the pandemic. We did hear the feedback from families, right? That was very challenging as people, right, have to go to work. And that was something that we brought in into the development for this year. We also try to honor, right, the must-wins around the extended learning. So that is the one piece that we we have heard a little bit of feedback also from families saying it does make things a little complex, particularly around that February break. But again, we do want to honor what we, right, express as part of our S R application in how we're trying to mitigate learning loss and also acceleration. We did go back and try to be a little more cognizant around days off that we were bringing in related to professional learning. So we were trying to do a little more in terms of when those were taking place and also being consistent, because we did, we always hear that in terms of feedback, at least be consistent so it'll be easier to recall when there, for example, may be like an early release day or something like that. That is why we try to stay within those Wednesdays as much as possible.
Thank you so much. This, again, is a first reading, so no vote is required on this matter at this time. So thank you. You got a question? Okay, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. Was there, did you look to make sure that with regards to Three Kings' Day, since it's falling on the weekend, there's nothing happening, you know, it's not observed on that Monday?
Right, typically, typically, right, Three Kings' Day, it's not like a federal holiday. So normally, right, we would celebrate it if it falls during a school day, but in this case, because it does fall on a weekend, that is why we did not kind of create like our own day off for Three Kings.
The reason I'm asking is because it's very, it's heavily celebrated in certain communities. So, you know, with the camels and, you know, just want to make sure.
And we will all be celebrating on that Saturday as we do whenever January sixth falls on the calendar.
All right, well, Board Member Brody.
Thank you. So even though it's the end of the year, we're always in school on the teens in June, was there any consideration for Juneteenth?
So in the proposed calendar, we would be already done. As this calendar is projected to end, last day would be June twelfth on the proposed calendar.
If by miracle, we never have a school day. So I was in mind saying we're a snow day, we always have a snow day. So we're never going to not be in school on a teen.
Right, so we know that that is something that is extremely important to us and we are working to bring forth policy around June, Juneteenth. In this case, like, for example, right now, we don't have existing policy and we, not this calendar, but just to speak of our twenty-two twenty-three calendar, right now, we have to make up one snow day. That's going to bring us to Friday, January, I don't want to give the date because I don't have it in front of me, but whatever that Friday is, and normally, immediately, we bring back the staff to do, for example, our Leadership Institute. That would mean that if we did what we've always done, it would mean leaders would be in professional learning nineteen, twenty, twenty-one. I am proposing that we do Leadership Institute twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two as to not impact the nineteen, right? Because some folks might decide, you know what, it's not on the calendar, but I want to, I want to take the day off, I want to honor it. So we want to make sure that we're not scheduling anything for the staff that still has to be on the twelve-month calendar on the nineteenth as it relates to Leadership Institute and to we're able to bring forth a policy for your approval.
Thank you. Now, even though it's not, it we hopefully we won't be in school on the nineteenth ever, but just that celebration and that awareness and the education behind that and observance of to respect that. But I'm hoping that we are at least doing something in schools to make our students aware the history of Juneteenth.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, you forgot to mention Mr. Walker was with us in D.C.
I did forget them. I apologize about that. My apologies. You certainly were. I have a good story about it, too. All right. Well, now I'll move on to our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are five point two, contract amendment approval, Avana, Aviana or Avana, excuse me, healthcare, five point through, five point three, approval of minutes from two twenty-one, twenty-three. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing, hearing none. Do I have a motion to take the consent agenda up as one item?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays?
Nay.
Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Now that the consent agenda is one item, do I have a motion to vote on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays?
Nay.
Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Executive session, item six point one, discussion of documents related to collective bargaining. Motion at the Hartford Board of Education enter executive session. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will be taken into executive session with us Superintendent Torres Rodriguez, Attorney Melinda Kaufman and Chief Philpin.